This is Mayor Pro Tem Wesley Hudson calling our special meeting to order in council today. We have Councilmember Holmes, myself, Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Jones, and Councilmember Jefferson, and I would love to call us to order. Our first item today is, you're not Bobby Fitz, John. Our first item today is the second item today, discussing our zoning decision delegations. This is Chris Andrews from Planner.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, good to be here with you. The staff wanted to provide an update based on some questions that council had last time at the conclusion of the presentation, and so staff took some time to be able to contact kind of peer in other jurisdictions that also use the delegation for their planning and zoning commissions to make zoning decisions. So that kind of table that I passed out prior to the meeting kind of shows that comparison, but we can get into a discussion just about what we asked the municipalities, what we saw in their ordinances, and then kind of what some staff recommendations might be as council moves forward with this. So in looking at the comparisons, and looking at the comparisons, staff looked at Greensboro, Guilford County, Kannapolis, Concord, Gastonia, and Randolph County, and that the findings of kind of that research was, is in that table. But the questions that we asked were, you know, what are the, what's the majority of your planning and zoning commission that's needed for zoning approval? If you, you don't get that majority, what happens to it? Does an item just get denied? Is there, you know, what's the mechanism after that? If an item's voted for denial, what happens? Does the applicant need to file an appeal? Does it automatically go to the council or the governing board? Those are things that are important to be able to figure out. We also asked the number of appeals that a jurisdiction might hear per year, just to get an idea of the volume of decisions that might be challenged. Questions about who can file an appeal. Is there any sort of standard for, you know, can it, can it be anybody within the city? Can it be anybody in general? You know, does it have to be somebody within the mailing notification radius? So we looked at if anybody defines that. In some of the ordinances, there was kind of a, I don't know if it's copy and paste as different jurisdictions have, have applied this, but there's a lot of same language about aggrieved parties can file an appeal. You know, is that a defined term? It's just anybody that's aggrieved, or do they have to meet a certain standard? We looked at the, the appeal period, you know, how, how long does somebody have to file an appeal? Is there a fee for that? And then does the applicant themselves, would they have to pay a fee? So, so we looked at all of those, and so staff has some, some recommendations that might help guide you as, as you go further along in this. Based on, on these questions, a majority of the jurisdictions required three-fourths, so seventy-five percent of their planning board or planning commission to approve an item, so that, that approval would just be, be done at that point. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, in High Point, there's nine members, so it would, it would require seven, and then those are the ratios as you go down. But, so staff might recommend having seventy-five percent or three-fourths of the Planning and Zoning Commission. That would be consistent with what other jurisdictions have. The next question is, if it's not a majority, that's, you know, you don't get that super majority, that three-fourths, but it's still not a denial, you know, maybe it's a five-four vote, you know, what, what happens there? Staff might, would argue that there's not a, you know, not enough to turn it down, so that there's still some interest in possibly approving that item. So we're recommending that if there's not a super majority for approval, but not a denial, that it would automatically go to the city council. It, it wouldn't warrant kind of shooting the application down for, for denial. But if there is a denial, you know, what happens there? And it's kind of split between some of the jurisdictions that we asked. The, half of them, just the, the process ends there, so if the Planning and Zoning Commission says, "We're denying this," that's the end unless it's appealed by somebody. Half of them also just forward that to the city council. Anecdotally, there's not a lot of applications that get recommended for denial by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so the volume, you know, it may not be a lot to, to say, if we deny it, it automatically goes to the, to the city council. So that's something for consideration, but the two jurisdictions that are closest to us in Greensboro and Guilford County, they both have an appeal fee, and we'll get into that next, but they do require that, that an applicant file an appeal if it's denied, so it doesn't automatically go to the city council. In looking at who can file an appeal, again, there, there were no definitions about who was aggrieved. I made sure to ask that of, of staff of these, these jurisdictions, and they just kind of said anybody can, can file it as long as it's within ten or fifteen days, whatever the jurisdiction has set up. So you have some options, certainly could be anyone that's aggrieved, or something that might be consistent with our notification radius for, for public notification for zoning cases is anyone within that radius would be able to file an appeal. So that certainly would, you know, would limit, maybe would limit frivolous appeals from folks in different parts of the city, but those most, most affected by a zoning case would, would definitely fall within that three hundred feet. So, so those are kind of recommendation A and B on either anyone can file it, or maybe those within the, the notification radius.
And you can appeal a, either way? You can appeal a denial or?
That is, there isn't a lot of any language that, that relates to that, but I believe so.
You can appeal any decision?
Yeah, you can certainly see if somebody were, you know, upset about an approval, that somebody could file an appeal and, and request that it be heard by, by the city council. Moving on to the definition of aggrieved party, again, that's common language that's within the ordinances of some of these other jurisdictions. Nobody really defined what that was, so it's really handled by allowing anybody to file an appeal. But there were no themes of people abusing that, that opportunity. None of the jurisdictions mentioned that. Well, I will say Greensboro did, did mention that a bit, but having an appeal fee they thought would, would help kind of stifle some of that. The appeal period, that is something that there's, there's no guidance within state statutes or anything, but Greensboro's is ten days, the other jurisdictions are at fifteen days. We would want to define business or, or calendar days, but at this point, you know, recommending perhaps ten business days. Then the appeal fee, the only Randolph County, Greensboro, and Guilford County all charged for those appeals. Guilford County is quite steep at $500, and Greensboro is $115. But it's important to consider, if you do have an appeal, what that means. That means there's a second round of mail notification, a second round of notification in the paper, the notification is, these fees won't cover the notification for that process. So just something to keep in mind as, as the council moves forward with that.
So appeal fee is paid regardless of the outcome?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, if you, if you want a shot at, you know, kind of turning that case around and get, almost getting a second chance at it, you, you would pay that appeal fee and then go through the process.
The, can, can you just clarify for me? In terms of the original fee to file, forgive me for not knowing this off the top of my head, but the original fee that they pay to do their application is what?
I believe that the base rezoning is $800, and the conditional rezoning is $1,200.
Clear.
Somewhere around there, I, I think that's the case.
And, and that number, I imagine, is, is the cost of the overhead needed for everything, needed to sort of go through that process. I'm, I'm curious how we get to the 250 number.
Kind of splitting the difference between Greensboro and Guilford County. $500 seems quite steep when you consider the, the other application fees, but this would be consistent with what an, it's probably a little bit lower than what an appeal would be for bringing something to the Board of Adjustment. So it, this is a policy choice, too. You don't have to have a fee if you don't want to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think the reason why I ask is, you know, if you can go with, you know, Greensboro's at 115, I, I think you got to have something because you got to cover whatever's needed. I was, I was thinking you would say you chose 250 because we calculated that that would be the extinguuating overhead cost for that, but if it's not, if it's not-
It would be much more.
It would be much more.
Yeah, but by the time you, you consider staff, you know, staff's involvement in it, just the mail notification and the, the cost to run an ad in the newspaper, all those things are quite expensive.
So it's just a matter at this point of how much do you recoup of the overhead we need to do that?
Correct.
And this is certainly a policy decision. I think what planning staff has done is tried to kind of survey, you know, sister jurisdictions close by, and this, in red is their recommendation, but it is certainly up to the will of council of, you know, how much you want it to be. There, there's no statutory or legal requirements that it has to be anything, so it's a policy decision.
Yeah, no, I, I get that. Again, I was trying to get to reasoning on how we chose the number, so that, that's the main thing. I get it.
But that's all, just averaging, kind of averaging.
When, when it, when you asked the Greensboro number of appeals heard per year, how many of that were from applicants, and how many of that, is there, is, does it show it disaggregated somewhere where of the five to six, maybe one was of the sort of living within that three hundred foot radius, or?
These are not posted anywhere, and, you know, that was kind of staff's recollection of, of how many, you know, they have per year. I don't have that information for you, how that was split.
So if, if you got ten day, ten business days to appeal, and then someone appeals it, that doesn't reset anything, does it? Like, you got the ten days and that's it? This is the only appeal we're going to go through, and then that's a wrap, whatever the decision is afterwards?
Correct.
Not like someone could kind of try to set up, well, I'm going to come, you do it this time, and I'm going to come and follow you.
Orchestrated thing.
I don't put it past, but I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
The, you know, scenario would be if, if something were, were recommended approval or approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission, that there's like a ten day clock that's ticking and kind of waiting to see, so before the ordinance actually gets formally, you know, signed or adopted, we'd have to figure out how, how that language works. But, yeah, you'd have that running clock, and if you meet the ten days, nobody files an appeal, and then, then it's approved.
But it wouldn't go back to P and Z?
It would come straight to us.
It, it wouldn't even come to you, if, if there's no appeal.
If there's an appeal, it would straight to council, though, but it wouldn't go back to P and Z?
No, 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 yes, it would, it would, it would come to you. There's some language in a lot of these ordinances, de novo, like a, a new case, but it, so it would come to you, you know, another staff presentation, full staff report, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and de novo means that you don't have to necessarily rely on the analysis or the decision that was made at P and Z. You see it first, brand new, you make your own decision.
Is there like a double jeopardy thing here, where if, let's just say it gets voted down at P and Z, applicant appeals comes to council, council approves, someone within three hundred foot radius wants to appeal that because they want it denied again, at what point do we stop with the appeals?
So I, I think typically within a, a decision that's made by a governing board, that, that appeal would then go to Superior Court, so, you know, there, there would be one appeal-
So once, once council's done, the appeal process goes somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
This is not our appeal, this is P and Z's appeal.
This is an appeal of the decision that the Planning and Zoning Commission makes.
To the city council.
Yeah, to the city council.
But once it's denied by us and goes somewhere else, they have to go through the, the entire process over again to get it, to bring it back?
Correct, yep, much like the Public's case or whatever, even if it's denied or it's withdrawn, yes, it would have to restart again. So these were the, the questions that we heard from council after the last discussion. So, you know, as, as our recommendation, you know, our, our staff will, will continue working on the, you know, ordinance framework and whatnot, and certainly can come back to you with draft ordinance or whatever the next steps will be.
And, and I think what we're looking for is that planning has done a great job of, you know, researching other jurisdictions and coming up with staff recommendations, but if there's anything that you see that you want to be different than staff recommendations, certainly we can reflect that. Like Chris said, the next step is drafting, and then we can come back to you with the draft language, but, you know, there's certain, a good amount of this is just policy based on, on how city council wants to create this. The enacting legislation that we got from the General Assembly was very broad, so that you could create it as you wanted to create the process.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you all just my thing on this. So first, thank you, staff. I think this, all the recommendations I think are, are really awesome. The only one that I might have a little bit of a hangup with is just the fee. If it's, so to speak, I don't want to call it an arbitrary number, something short of arbitrary, because we're not, we're not exactly recouping our red anyways. I think we're trying to get closer to reducing the margin on that, but I don't, I don't know that it does it. All, all I think about is what are, what are the byproducts or outcomes of us choosing this fee? And one of the things that comes to mind is that as a developer, if I'm navigating processes in Greensboro, High Point, all these different places, every time I go somewhere and I see something different, it kind of just gets a little confusing. So I almost wonder, I mean, not that I'm, I'm looking to have us do the same thing they're doing just because they did it, but how, how do you, you know? And again, we've got our reasons why we can't just streamline and do everything the same way everyone else does it, but where possible to keep things a little simple, I think, could be to our benefit, and maybe keep that number a little lower. That, that's just kind of my thinking on that.
An alternative to the 250 may be for us to look at the existing fees that we have in place in the department and set this fee consistent with those, and, and bring that back as a recommendation. I don't know if it's going to be higher or lower than the 250, but that way it would be in keeping with our existing fee schedule. Is that something that we could look at?
So Madam Attorney, what do you need from us?
Just, you know, direction, like I said, it, it sounds like perhaps council is agreeable to a lot of the recommendations, so our first draft of the revised language will be to reflect those, and then maybe we'll just come back with a placeholder for the fee, and then that can be determined at the next step by council, once we're close to having a draft ready, which I think should be pretty quickly.
And Chris, you needed us to determine, you had this one here, this last bullet point, option A or option B?
Oh, sure. So they, they could go along with kind of your appeal. So one of the, the considerations about having a fee for an appeal is, you know, it might just, might mean that somebody's serious about it, instead of just filing appeal after appeal. I mean, we've not seen that in High Point, but-
Frivolous is the word.
Frivolous, yeah. I mean, I mean, somebody just is against all development and wants to file every appeal, and we, we haven't seen that happen here. So, so there may not be an issue, but that was something that those jurisdictions kind of, kind of offered as, as guidance. So you, you could limit the, or kind of give some more definition to who can file an appeal by, you know, making it consistent with who would have received a, a notification for that, so that's another option.
Yeah.
It certainly would, would lower the pool of people available to make that appeal, but-
And are you looking for guidance from council on if we prefer anyone or the option of anyone within the radius? Are you looking for guidance from us?
Sure.
I, I'll, I'll throw it out there, I'm, I'm inclined for those within the three hundred foot radius, where it'd be them, just, I mean, as the point said, you don't want us to get into anyone who wants to be pro or against, you know, development. I think, you know, without getting into definitions of who's agreed and who's not agreed, just keeping it simple as if you're within that three hundred foot radius, then, then allowing it to be for that. That would be my recommendation.
I would actually differ. I would think that you get into the case, I mean, just take Public's, for instance, you have people that weren't at three hundred foot radius that were, would have been impacted by that case, I think, and then we get into picking winners and losers on this. I think we just, I, I'm okay with Greensboro's language where it says, you know, anyone can appeal, I'll leave it to them to find out if it's worth them putting up the whatever 250 or whatever we go with. I just, I don't, I don't want to sit here and explain to somebody that since you don't live right here, but you live a block away, you didn't get a letter, I just, I want the right as a citizen to appeal something that I feel is going to negatively impact me, and let the P and Z commissions decide from there. So I'm okay with leaving it open.
Yeah, the option of, of a radius is, you know, something that's very definitive, it's not a judgment that staff has to make, you know, is somebody impacted a lot or little? That's, it's not a position we'd want city staff to be in, so.
Remind me, when you send your mail, that's, that's as far as you go with, with your mail notification, is three hundred?
And that actually exceeds what's required by state, state statutes, so we're, I say more generous, but we, we send out more mail than we are required to by the state.
I wish it was a way that we could kind of see what percentage of the three hundred were the appealed or questioned.
Oh, now, that is something that we're recommending, that no other jurisdiction Oh, now, that is something that we're recommending, that no other jurisdiction has, has set it up that way, so, um, there wouldn't be any stats to, for us to fall back on.
Yeah, I, I mean, to Councilman Jones' point, if we end up going with the anyone, I'd be curious, um, you know, if some of this gets voted on and approved, you are coming back, you know, a year later, us being able to hear where that stood, and, uh, just seeing if, because I, I, I think in my mind, what you're trying to mitigate is anyone who's anti-development being able to just come, and if we see that, it becomes a sort of issue that we see that's recurring where everyone's coming, just anyone, because they're, you know, they like writing columns and they think taxes shouldn't be spent on anything, right? Then you get those appeals and seeing how that does, and if it's one of those things where we don't see a lot of those, but there was an appreciation that we kept it open, I think we can make a wise decision there, but I, I'd be fine keeping it at anyone and seeing where it goes.
We can amend it.
I know that the chart is a little, is a little small print, but just looking at the data, Greensboro had a number of appeals, five to six in a year, Guilford County had less than one, Kannapolis less than one, Concord less than one, Gastonia a few, Randolph two, so if the, I mean, again, who knows, but just if you're going by data of other jurisdictions, it seems to be small, but I think that's a wise idea, Councilman Jefferson, to maybe have a revisit period after our first year or so with this new process to see if any additional tax amendments are needed.
Any other guidance you need from us?
I don't think so, I think we're good. And, and again, you know, the great thing here is that it, it can be amended as time goes on and, and reevaluated, so, um, yeah, that's a good thing. All right, well, thank you.
You don't need a formal vote for promise for anything, you're fine with that. Thumbs up, good. Um, Ms. Falder, since you're here, is this, do you have any comment about this, are you waiting for the sign ordinance?
I think I will.
Great. Um, while, while you're here, do you want to do the sign ordinance, or do you want to go ahead and go, yeah, let's go, let's go ahead and do the sign ordinance while you're, while you're set up, that'd be great.
We hope that this will be pretty short, I think we've addressed everything that council is.
And this is not a full presentation, this is just-
Correct, this'll just be kind of an update.
Couple of questions that we have.
We're not showing you, uh, Breeze Wood, Pennsylvania again.
All right.
All right, so, just want to pick up with what staff heard from the March sixth meeting. Uh, we heard about roof signs, we heard about murals, we heard about, uh, clarification on how to measure awning, or awning measurements, electronic changeable copy signs, and then some definitions, so I'll, I'll hop into the, the actual changes here. Uh, before we get into the things that were necess- or that were, uh, kind of influenced by, by council, uh, there were two changes that staff, just through our administration of the, the ordinance, uh, wanted to change. Uh, one was related to super graphic signs, these are the signs that, that we would propose to allow for, for market showrooms downtown. Uh, there's some market showrooms in the mixed use district as well that are, are non, called non-conforming uses, so they're, they're good to go, um, continue as long as they're still in operation, and so some of those already have super graphics on them, um, so in the interest of not creating additional non-conformities, we thought, all right, as long as you're in the mixed use district and a furniture showroom or market showroom, uh, you can have super graphics as well. So that was one change that, that staff had made. Um, the next one was related to what are called light pole banners, um, or stakeholders referred to them as, uh, boulevard banners, so these would be, uh, let's see, I don't have a picture of it, but these would be, uh, if you go across into Showplace, um, the banners that are on the light poles that are in the parking lots. Um, but we originally proposed six square feet for those, and we're kind of told, all right, maybe that's a, a little too small, um, so we, we kind of wrestled with that and ended up coming up with, with fifteen square feet, um, that would, uh, we felt would meet the, the requests of, of stakeholders that responded about this one, so, um, but just for clarification, these, these are not the light pole, or, it, it could be the same type of banner, but we're not talking about banners that are within the public right of way here, uh, so on city streets or NCDOT rights of way, that's, that's not what this light pole banner is, is enabling or allowing people to do. This would be, you know, you're in the Palladium and you want to put up some branding or something like that in your, in your private parking lot, this would be a way to do it. So staff did add to the definition of the light pole banners that it, it's those that are not located within the public right of way, so there's no confusion there. There was also a, a request or a consideration from, uh, same stakeholder about looking at the, what are called limited duration signs, it's basically the, you know, grand openings, some sorts, we call them special event signs right now, um, but their request at the same time was, was what we have, so there was no need for a change there, but just wanted to, to let council know, we, we heard from our stakeholders and wanted to make sure whatever concerns they had, we addressed, so, uh, you'll see what we added to the light pole banner, definition was just that, uh, that it's not located within the right of way. The next section, uh, or next thing that we addressed was roof signs, um, you know, had, had some discussion about those at, at the meeting in March, again, not a, not a ton to lean back on in terms of, of existing ordinances, uh, they're outright prohibited in a lot of them, but we looked to Durham and Charlotte for, for some examples. And, uh, so what we heard was council wanted roof signs, so we, we took them out of the prohibited section and put them in what are called specialty signs, uh, and so specialty signs are kind of in addition to the, the allotment that you would get, so it's kind of like a bonus, bonus sign, um, so only those within, only properties within the central business district and the mixed use district would be permitted roof signs. The standard of one per building, and then, uh, so this is in a table, and then we have text that talks about the standards for roof signs, and so this is, these are the standards that are within the, the proposed ordinance, and we had, um, these were consistent with what we had, uh, that staff had presented the last time that we, we talked, so. Are there any questions about roof sign, is it helpful if I go through the, through the standards, or, um, any questions of council on these? Because again, some of these standards are kind of a blend of, of Charlotte and Durham. Uh, we don't have like a roof sign guy to ask because there's no, not really any roof signs in High Point, so, um, relying on other jurisdictions for assistance here.
Oh, that title, the roof sign guy.
Can you go back to your slides that have the pictures in it?
Sure. So one of those is in High Point, uh, the Carolina container, and don't know when that was permitted or if it was ever permitted, but just an example of the form of signage.
All right, can you go back to the list again?
Sure.
And it says in G, it shall not, it, I almost sound biblical, it shall not be placed on the flat roofs?
It shall only be placed on flat roofs, so-
Okay, I'm sorry.
So you, you wouldn't have it like on the peak, you know, at, at the peak of the roof.
Only be placed on flat roofs, okay.
Typically, commercial buildings, yeah.
Nothing with like angles?
So, uh, it's, if you do, I think I had this in the previous presentation, but if you had a mansored roof that has, uh, like, I'm thinking, on Main Street, Tom's Place, Enterprise, Rent a Car, that, they've got signs that are like on that mansored roof, th- those aren't roof signs, those are, are, are just attached signs, um, so-
That's what I meant, yeah.
That's a good point, Chris, council like the Ten Commandments, I'd say.
I, you see, I, I open that door, I'm more-
Nine, nine, uh, nine commandments for roof signs, but anyways-
I'm sorry, I hear shal, and that's where it goes.
Well, it's like King James went to Planning and zoning, this is how you, sorry, y'all.
I was saying something about illumination, none, and slide you just had.
Carry on.
What was the question?
I think I just saw some, you may have internal illumination, okay.
So the, these standards would, would essentially require that a, a roof sign is cutout lettering, not just a big panel that you put up on the top of the building, um, that's fairly consistent, you know, with, with what we've seen, um, for standards for roof signs. And if it did, you know, if, if it is illuminated, um, it, it would, it would still then be limited to the cutout graphics. Any questions, roof signs? All right, we'll move on.
Uh, yeah, just, it's probably just semantics, but we're talking about a peaked roof, right? And it wouldn't allow to be along the edge of the, the ridge of the peaked roof, like say for instance, it's here, and then perpendicular runs along the, the, the angle of the roof?
Um, trying to depict, or-
So, so you've got the peaked, you've got the roof, uh, it's, it's angled, it's, uh, it's peaked, and then say for instance, it's got a, you know, the facing side of it, and then along the top of that ridge, that sign cut out on the top?
I, I, it doesn't sound like it would apply in that scenario, um, you know, one of the things, we, we've kind of limited these to certain districts, uh, well, we have, uh, central business district and the mixed use district, uh, most, most of those buildings and uses are not residential in nature, um, and so, uh, I, I don't know that there's a lot of peaked roofs even in these districts, um, so I, I think most of the time, you know, commercial buildings are, are constructed with a, with a flat roof, but. All right, the next thing that we heard about was murals, uh, or, or what we had called wall painted signs, so we, we took it out of, uh, where they were prohibited, put it in, um, to, um, signs that are allowed without a permit, so it would not require, uh, uh, somebody who's painting a mural or somebody who's wanting a mural to be painted to come get a permit. Uh, it's consistent, w- w- we have some other sign types that are allowed without a permit, it would just be a, you know, if somebody did do one of, a, a mural that's, doesn't meet the standards, it would be an enforcement issue at that point, um, kind of, kind of after the fact, but, um, I'll go to the standards here, just an example of, of a mural. Um, so the, uh, standards A through E were what, um, what we had for wall painted signs, and then staff wanted to add, uh, section or, or item F, so we're still consistent in that, uh, you can have a mural on two sides of a structure, uh, it's got to be maintained using weather resistant paint, so there's some, um, you know, kind of delineation of how that graphic is applied to the building, it, it's, it's not a, a thermoplast image that's, you know, printed on a big printer and, and put on the side of a building, um, you know, not covering, uh, windows or doors, um, not limiting, you know, who, who can put their name on the bottom of a mural, but we did want to, to spell out that if there was a portion of a wall or a mural that has some sort of commercial message, um, that, that that portion of the, the wall or mural would count as a, um, as a sign, so not your whole mural, but just that portion, and a good, good example of that is, is the Coltrane mural next to Fast, or on the Fast Signs building, so only that portion of the, kind of the white area around Fast Signs would be their attached sign. So still kind of allowing the, the, you know, artistic, uh, outlet there, um, but we wanted to clarify that to make sure that if somebody did want to incorporate a commercial message on their, on the same wall as a mural, that only that portion would be counted. And typically you'd have it delineated by some background color, or if it's illuminated, something like that, it, it's typically easy to know where the mural ends and where that sign starts. Any questions on, on murals? So the, another question, I think Mayor Wagner had brought this up, is just our, our definition, but how do we arrive at, at the amount of signage that you can put on an awning? Um, so you'll see the, the reflected changes here in, you know, A, so we added that, just the face of the awning structure fill count, uh, so you get ten percent or whatever the, the proportion is of that, so we think this is easier to read now. It ma- better matches up with the graphic, too. We heard comments about electronic changeable copy signs, uh, in the desire to have those within the, both the mixed use district as well as the gateway corridor overlay, which is East Chester, um, there are a number of properties that have also kind of through conditional zoning, uh, entered into the gateway corridor standards, so there may be properties like along, uh, Wendover, um, uh, maybe some near Skeet Club that have, um, East Chester, uh, standards as well, so, uh, this would, would then allow, um, electronic changeable copy in, in those districts, or anything that's subject to the East Chester standards.
What is the MX, is that the main?
Mixed use, mixed use district, so that would be either, um, there's, there's two sub-districts, the mixed use downtown as well as the mixed use Washington Street, so it would allow electronic changeable copy in those sub-districts as well. And so the, the text reflects the addition of those two, two districts. Uh, this is not video signs, so this is, there are additional standards for how, you know, how, the rate of change for a message, um, electronic changeable copy signs are limited to one-third of the face of a sign, so, um, you know, there's, there's some parameters around electronic changeable copy signs, but easy addition. And then there were some questions about definitions, and, uh, I think Mayor Wagner was alluding to, um, some public art, you know, could that be misconstrued as a sign, that sort of thing, uh, so, uh, in consultation with our, our legal, um, assistants, we've, uh, we've amended the non-commercial, uh, message, um, definition to add event or activity. Um, I'm sorry, this is in promoting an event, so this is not, what the mayor was talking about was in just a, just another point here, but, um, this was an addition, and then we added, uh, instead of just having non-commercial message, we, we ended up adding commercial message, uh, so it's just kind of the, the flip of that, but wanted to make sure we had, had both of those, and then this is, I think was what the mayor's, um, or what the mayor's concern was, um, and you'll, you'll notice the, um, text there that, that's kind of crossed out about intended or designed to call attention to something, and, you know, I think maybe his fear was that public art could, could still call attention to something but isn't really used as a sign, so, um, we felt more comfortable going forward with this definition, so just wanted to reflect what the changes were, um, and staff and our, our legal, um, team is, was, uh, satisfied with that, so. So those, those were the changes, um, the, the ordinance that's attached in your packet is reflective of all of these, and so the, um, we feel like we're, we're ready to hopefully have that approved tonight. Are there any questions of, of staff at this point?
Say thank you for going back to drawing table, I think this is a lot more flexible. I'm pleased with it.
And the great thing is, if it's not working, you can come back and, you know, amend it, amend it again at some point, not the whole thing again, that's, that was a lot, but anyhow, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Next up, we have Bobby Fitzjohn, report on our bonds.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Proten, members of the city council, um, Steve is passing out, um, some discussion materials for you all, uh, as well as the council members who couldn't be with us tonight, um, or this afternoon. Um, the, uh, finance department and the city manager's office, um, asked our financial advisors, Davenport and Company, to come and, um, talk about our long-term, um, bond strategy, just to kind of give everyone a refresher as we head into budget season, as well as, um, this may be the first time that some of you have, you know, heard this much detail about some of our bond projects. Um, so, uh, I'm introducing Mr. Ted Cole from Davenport and Company, one of our long-term, um, financial advisors, we've been with Davenport since two thousand and four, they helped us get our revenue bond project started up, um, so they're been a longtime partner in this process, and, uh, look forward to hearing the presentation, thank you.
All right, thank you, good afternoon. Um, the hard copy that was sent around is exactly what's on your screen, so whichever is easier for you all to- So whichever is easier for you all to follow along with. Again, I'm Ted Cole with Davenport, pleased to be presenting to you all. There's a fair amount of information. I'm going to hit a few things a little bit more quickly and dig in on a couple of slides. And would encourage you, if you have any questions about what we're discussing, please stop me and we can keep it interactive. There are page numbers in the lower right-hand corner. So we're going to start with a discussion on tax-supported debt. We're breaking this into two major categories, tax-supported debt or utility debt. Utility debt being supported from water and sewer rates. So on page three on the left, we talk about the city's bond ratings, your credit ratings from the rating agencies that are associated with your general obligation bonds that you would vote and ultimately issue for projects. There are three on the left-hand side, three rating agencies. The highest rating that any local government or even a state government can achieve is AAA. You can see you are AAA from S and P or Standard and Poor's. From Moody's, you're one notch away. And from Fitch, you're one notch away. So you're very highly rated. I believe that over time, it's reasonable to expect and to aspire to get to that AAA across the board. It just, those last few moves are a little bit more difficult. At the bottom left, you can see a progression of your bond ratings over the last roughly 20 years. So you can see where we started in pre-2000 levels. You were a solid AA. And then we got upgraded a few different times from the different rating agencies. And you currently sit at that AA1, AAA, AA+ level. On the right-hand side, we subscribe to a database that Moody's maintains. And we just have summarized for you all, cities and towns. We've purposely excluded counties. But cities and towns nationally in that upper right that are AAA, there's about 230 cities and towns that Moody's rates as AAA. AA1, there's about 290, one of which is High Point. And then you can see AA2, the rating below you. And then within North Carolina, there's 14 AAA cities and towns. There's 13 AA1 cities and towns, again, one of which is High Point. So you're in a very highly rated level, very good company nationally as well as within the state. Talk a little bit about your tax-supported debt. So page four on the left shows you graphically by fiscal year, the sum, the annual debt service, each bar is a fiscal year, of your tax-supported debt. So basically anything that isn't for water and sewer purposes. Beginning in the year we're about to wrap up, fiscal year '23, you can see your payment, it's about $15 million and it's stepping down. Some years it steps down a little more than other years, but you've generally got a nice decline to your debt profile. And that's going to help you prepare to afford whatever else you might want to do in the future. Because as those payments go down, you have the ability to backfill with new debt. Bottom left, the total amount of debt outstanding as of the last audit was about $125 million. Again, tax-supported debt. And you can see on the right-hand side, by year, principal, interest and total payments, again, about $15 million a year, stepping down. Everything on your books is fixed rate. The interest rate, the debt service will not change unless you all were to, you know, refund or accelerate payoff. Page five, you all have certain debt policies that you have adopted or prior councils have adopted. Across the top, you can see those. The first one on the left is called a 10-year payout ratio. It's measured in percentage and it's the pace with which you are paying back your debt. Higher percentage is better, it means you're paying the debt back more quickly. You have a policy that says you want to be able to demonstrate that in a 10-year window, you can amortize at least 60% of your debt. You're a little above that, which is good, higher is better here. So you're above that policy, in that case, that's good. And directly below that, you can see some comparisons to those rating categories I talked about with High Point and Gold, the national and North Carolina cities and towns in the light green and the dark green. Generally speaking, you want for this one, your bar further to the right. You're a little below the median's, but not an outlier by any means. So you're in compliance with your policy and you compare well. The middle of the page is measuring the amount of debt outstanding as a percent of your tax base. You are at, let's call it 1% when we do that math. And your policy says you don't want to go above 2.5%. So you're well below the policy, lower is better. When we look at that, we say, you know, the city has debt capacity. It is a reasonable conversation for you all to be discussing capital projects that might require debt. So there's debt capacity. Doesn't necessarily mean it's affordable, right? Debt affordability is a related but slightly different question. And we're going to cover that as well. And then on the far right, debt service to expenditures. So essentially your annual debt payment, that $15 million as a percent of your budget. And that's about 11.5%. Your policy says you don't want to go above 15, you're below it, lower is good. Here again, you've got some capacity. And you compare at the very bottom on those other comparisons. You compare well to other similarly rated cities and towns. So the takeaway that I would give you here is you've got good policies, you're in compliance, and the city has debt capacity. On this topic, we're going to wrap up on page six and talk a little bit about the capital projects that are being discussed on the tax-supported side. So on the left, we've broken it into major categories. The first four lines are bonds that have been voted, that have not yet been issued, general obligation bonds, some transportation and parks and rec bonds, $24 million of bonds that you could issue. Staff is in the midst of planning for those and we're working with them to sort of time those out. Lot to be managed there. You know, when the projects are ready to be bid, having all the resources internally to manage those projects. We have to deal with the local government commission in Raleigh, but that planning is in the works. The next category is something called 2/3s, general obligation bonds. That is a North Carolina unique issuance where every other year, you have the ability to issue what we call 2/3s bonds, which don't require a vote of the people. They are allowed to be issued based on the prior year's paydown of debt. So that's about $11 million of additional GO capacity that you could take advantage of. Other major capital projects with preliminary timing assigned to them, stadium improvements, 300 Oak Street, new city hall, downtown parking. I think you all are probably familiar with those at different levels. All of those together is about $85 million. So the universe of projects that we're discussing with staff now that might require debt on the tax-supported side, I'm going to round up slightly. It's about $120 million, okay? And again, those plans are evolving, projects are being designed, engineered. There's maybe land acquisition going on, things like that. And we'll be putting together a firm plan about the issuance cycle. We have modeled that debt in a way that we would expect this debt to be issued in North Carolina, 20-year term. We're using a 5% interest rate, that is higher than the current market. But some of these bonds won't be issued for a few years. On the right-hand side of the top seven lines, what we're demonstrating to you there is that if you were to issue that debt, that $120 million over time, could you still be in compliance with your policies? And the answer is generally yes, with the exception of that 10-year payout ratio for a period of about two years, possibly. So what I would say is that one aside, which I don't think that is a meaningful out of compliance for a couple of years and less than 1% off your policy, is that list of projects is within your policy range, it's within your debt capacity. So I think it's a very reasonable list of projects and amounts to be discussing and planning for. The final question is what we're calling the tax-equivalent impact associated with those projects. That is, what kind of dollars need to be brought into the capital plan in order to afford that new level of debt, right? Remember, we're at about $15 million a year right now for debt payments and it's stepping down slightly. But we're talking about adding maybe $120 million. So while your current debt model is totally balanced, cash flows, no problem whatsoever, and then some, we have identified that additional dollars are needed to support this additional level of debt. And we've measured it three ways. Line 17 that says total incremental tax-equivalent impact, a little over seven cents. So what it's saying is, to bring on that debt, you would need to be prepared to bring in about seven pennies worth of revenue into the debt model. Now, it doesn't happen all at once, it happens on a staggered basis, fiscal years '25, '26 and '27. But it's out there. And it could be a penny either way, right? If a project slows down, project accelerates, that could change the impact. But order of magnitude, something in the range of seven pennies that would be needed across three years. As an alternative way to look at the exact same model, we just solve for what if you adjusted the rate or found that amount of revenue upfront, on the front end of all of this, in the budget you're now working on for fiscal year '24? And it would be a little over four pennies. So it's seven pennies over time, it doesn't happen until maybe '25, '26 and '27, or a little over four pennies in the budget you're working on. And then we measured it again, if you did it in FY '25, and it's a little over five pennies. So the range of four to seven pennies, depending on when you choose to put that in place, is the affordability measure for this tax-supported CIP. Any questions on that?
So to clarify, what you're asking is that, what you're stating is that line 18 suggests that if the tax, if you use this sort of tax, 4.24 cents, and did it upfront, you're saying that that would be the same sort of impact used over the next however many years?
It would fund the same program as the seven pennies word, but you're doing it a little sooner, that's why it's less.
You're doing it sooner, but help me out. It would be an increase and then a decrease right back down? Or it would be an increase and stay at whatever that is?
It would be an increase and it would stay there for a number of years until all of that debt hits its peak and starts to come back down. Then you'll have the opportunity to consider reducing the rate. At that time, the reality is you'll probably be talking about new projects. So it's an evolving thing. But the way that works is if you do, if you take the step to raise the revenue sooner, you can get by with less or fewer pennies. It's just happening sooner and it's got to be in place till at least 2028, 2029.
2/3 of that's going to the city hall, round figure.
Almost, yeah, about a half. 60 of the 120.
Yes, that's what I meant, I'm sorry, I was looking at the 84.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? Again, not looking for any action, just trying to get you all reintroduced to some of these concepts. All right, so with that, we'll go to utilities. We've got a few extra slides on this one, but I think it'll all make some sense to you. Starting on page eight, I'm not going to read all of that. Water on the left, sewer on the right, gives you a little bit of a historical overview. You've got a system that dates back many, many, many years. Talks about the primary facilities and partnerships, notable events. Couple of things I would mention on water. You know, back in the 80s and 90s, regional shortages, restrictions that were in place and a renewed emphasis put on capacity. How do we build water capacity for the region? Piedmont Triad, Raw Water Authority was created. Their Random and Dam was created, that's another resource. Very bottom left, this should give you a lot of comfort. In this world, they call the safe yield. You know, what do you have available essentially in layman's terms of water to provide? It's about 22 MGD, that's million gallons per day. Your average daily consumption is a little over 10 MGD. So your average demand is about half your capacity. So what that tells us is, one, it allows you to meet those peak demands, right? In the summer, when it's dry, watering, you know. So you definitely have peaks above the average. But on average, you've got a lot of capacity which will help facilitate growth for you all. And then it reflects quite a bit of investment in that infrastructure. It's a very expensive business to be in, water and sewer. Same on the right-hand side with sewer. Notable event was the mid-'90s, early '2000s lawsuit for clean water. Special order by consent with the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission about stormwater overflows. There was a lot of aging infrastructure and a renewed interest in the early 2000s to rehab that system and expand it. And so current flows, the capacity rather, is about 36 MGD of all of your wastewater treatment capacity. And your average flow is about 17. So again, about 50%, you're using about 50% of your capacity. So you've got ability to grow there as well. Water and sewer, that's critical obviously to your continued growth. A little bit of perspective on page nine on the left. The type of capital that's been invested in the water and sewer system over the last roughly 20 years. It's been a balanced combination of debt and cash. You haven't overissued or heavily relied on one funding method or the other. You've issued just under $300 million worth of debt for water and sewer. And you funded cash about $125 million. So between the debt and the cash, almost $425 million of capital has gone into the water and sewer system. Significant. On the right-hand side is a year-by-year, going back roughly the same 20 years, summary of your annual rate increases that have gone in for water and sewer. And you can see in the early 2000s, coming off of a lot of pent-up demand where rates weren't adjusted and capital costs were starting to ramp up from some of the reasons I talked about earlier. You had a few years there of double-digit rate increases, 15-plus percent per year, at least on wastewater. We then got into a more disciplined, forward-looking capital planning mode. And what you'll see since then is more of a 3% to 5% rate increase strategy that has unfolded almost every year. There's a few exceptions where, you know, for one reason or another, it was decided to take a break during one fiscal year. I think most recently, I think most of you all have been on the council since maybe 2020, 2021. So you're familiar with some of those budgetary discussions about maybe a year where you didn't pass along quite as high a rate increase or a year where you decided to take a break on a rate increase just given what was going on in the economy and the community. But most recently, you've gotten back to a 4% rate increase. And we're going to talk a little bit about where do we go from here with rate increases? Kind of like we talked about on the tax-supported side, what does it take? We're going to sort of address that on the utility side. But a very disciplined, maybe you could call it sort of cost-of-living level rate adjustment strategy over the years.
Is there an equivalent rate increase to tax percentage? Like 15% equals 1 cent in tax increase?
We can do that math, I don't know it off the top of my head. What level of water and sewer rate increase is equal a penny's worth of revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've got it.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have it, Bobby has it.
Where we're at currently with revenue, 1% is about $600,000. We're about $1.3 million for a penny. So about 2% is about the equivalent of a penny, if we were to try to use those numbers. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Page 10, on the left. What we're showing you is the utility debt. But in this case, we're going back to 1998. So all of that capital investment and the debt that was issued to support it, you can see what the debt profile did, the annual payments did. It was a building and it peaked out somewhere around 20. It was building, and it, it peaked out somewhere around 2016, 2017, and it's been kind of level, maybe stepped down slightly. So the gray bars are historical, looking backwards. The green is current year going forward. So that debt profile has changed significantly, right? A lot of investment, and we did use, we did use debt to, to fund a good bit of that. The total amount of debt outstanding on the utility system, I'm going to round up slightly, 180 million, okay? You can see that it's level for a few years, and then it has some significant step downs, which is going to benefit you in the future as we talk about new capital. The right-hand side just shows you by fiscal year, principal interest in total. So it's, it's really, on an annual basis, very close to the tax-supported debt, $15 million a year, give or take. One of the major initiatives that we undertook as a city, and we were helpful, or we worked with you to do it, was evolving to what we call a revenue bond structure. So I think all of you, while you've been on council, it's always been revenue bonds. But there was a time, historically, where the city voted GOs and did other types of debt to fund water and sewer purposes. And in '04, what we saw was, to address a lot of these issues and to invest in the facilities to grow, we really were going to need to move to a new type of debt mechanism for utilities, and that's revenue bonds. Very commonly used. Think about it this way, as, as an investor in a revenue bond of the city of High Point, you're not, you don't have the taxing authority of, of the city council. There's no taxing, tax-backed mechanism in revenue bonds. And you don't have a lien on an asset, you don't have a mortgage. Instead, what you have is you have a lien on net revenues. And when you think about it, the first thing, and there's a document that, that dictates and lays all of this out very clearly, it's called a trust indenture. It is the rules of the road, if you will, for the revenue bond credit and how you go about managing that credit as a city council. The first thing that has to be paid each year out of the utilities is the operations. So salaries, chemicals, utilities. The next thing is the bonds. And so the bondholders have a lien on what's called your net revenues, revenues left over after operating expenses are paid. And a couple of key concepts at the bottom here, there is a rate covenant that's included in the revenue bonds. And what that rate covenant says, in, in layman's terms, is that for every dollar of debt service that you have to pay, you have to be able to demonstrate that you have a $1.20 with which to pay it. And that's called coverage, because expenditures could go up unexpectedly, revenues could drop unexpectedly, weather events, whatever, and the revenue bondholder has no other recourse but your revenues. And so the coverage factor, that .20, just gives you all and them a little bit of cushion to manage the system. So the bare minimum is, for every dollar of debt service, each year, you have to have a $1.20 to pay it. You all and most highly-rated communities operate at a higher level. That's the baseline minimum that the, the bond documents call for. And you'll see that in a moment. You've been higher than that. You've been around 170, which is why you're AA-rated in your utility system, or AAA-rated. The other is additional bonds. You have to be able to demonstrate through a calculation that you have rates and charges in place to account for the new bonds that you want to go to the market to, to sell. So you're talking about expanding a plant, what have you, and you need to go and issue $25 million of bonds to do that. We have to be able to demonstrate that your projected revenues, your projected financial performance, is adequate to meet that 1.2x test, so that the market knows the rates and charges, and the budgeting is in place for you to be able to handle that new level of debt service. I mentioned that you are highly rated, and you really are, on a utility system, it's almost identical to your general obligation ratings. S&amp;P is AAA, Fitch is AA+. Moody's has your one notch lower at AA2. So they're, they're a little bit, they look at utilities a little bit tougher than they do the GO credit. And at the bottom of that chart, you can see the progression over time. When we started the revenue bonds, we were a single-A credit, and over time, you all have worked your way into what we would call the high AA and even AAA. And I'm going to tell you, or discuss, I should say, you know, why that's important. Rating agency observations, we highlighted a couple of things that get to managing your utility system. Moody's, the factors that could lead to a downgrade, failure to implement timely rate increases. Fit, excuse me, S&amp;P in the middle, we could lower the rating should the system financial metrics materially erode from your current strong level. So they're, they're acknowledging you have strong financial metrics, and that's usually debt service and cash. Those are the two biggies. But they're saying, should those metrics get weaker, that would be the type of event that might trigger a reduction in the bond rating. And Fitch, kind of the same takeaway. So it's very important. Little bit about how the bond rating correlates to your interest rates when you go to the market, and maybe just your market access. Look at the graph, and the, the vertical axis is percentages. And what you'll see is the AA-rated dark green line, it's the lowest of all of them. We've, we've graphed AA, single-A, which is below you, and triple-B, which is even lower. So AA is the dark green line. You'll see, yes, it moves around a little bit, but it's very steady, it's the lowest of the three. So what does that tell us? Is you've got, that's where you're going to get favorable interest rates, predictable interest rates, and, and, and less volatile market. If your, as your credit gets weaker to the single-A, that's the light green, your cost of borrowing goes up, interest rates are higher, that means you can't afford as much for the same dollars. And you'll also see there's quite a bit more volatility, and then it's amplified even more so with the triple-B, which is several notches below you. Not to suggest that that's within the realm of possibility, but it, it really does a nice job of showing at that level, one, how expensive debt can be, interest rates, and two, how the market volatility will have a significant impact on your ability to go and issue bonds and get the funding. So higher-level ratings beyond the pride factor is, there's a direct correlation to your access to capital and your cost of capital. Rating comparisons or peer groups on the left, the same, same as the GO, we, we source Moody's. Water and sewer systems nationally, there are 15 AAAs, 189 AAAs, one of which is High Point, so you're in very good company there. Within North Carolina, there's three AAA water and sewer systems and 19 AAAs. And you can see on the right-hand side, that universe of, call it AA and AAA water and sewer systems within North Carolina. And you're, you know, in terms of ratings, you're in the up, you know, the, the top half there. Again, very good company in terms of ratings in, in a state that has very strong utility credit ratings. Little bit about how the rating agencies look at establishing your water and sewer rating. There's a, there's a grid or a, a scorecard. System characteristics are worth 30% of the rating. Asset condition, are you updating your assets? What's the remaining useful life of your assets? The service area, wealth levels, meeting family income, economic growth, and the size of your system. That's 30% of the rating, but none of that do you all really control in a year-by-year, budget-by-budget basis. Those are longer-term initiatives to build out and improve assets over the long term, strengthening the, the city's economy, right? Those are things that don't happen quickly, or you can't manage them directly through a budget. They're a longer-term control item. Financial strength, however, which is 40% of the rating, you really do have some control over there, over that. Annual debt service coverage, you can manage that debt service coverage depending on how you go through your budget process, right? Controlling expenses, managing revenues. Days cash on hand, that's basically reserves. How much reserves do you have? We, we look at that, just like on the general fund, your fund balance. In utilities, we look at reserves, and your debt to operating revenues. So that's 40% of the rating, and that's an area where you do have a little more control, year-by-year, decision-by-decision. Management, rate management, your compliance with regulatory requirements and capital planning, again, areas where you have some control. In our, our discussion with staff and in, in talking with the rating agencies, you know, there are things that are longer-term initiatives, and you're moving in the right direction, but try to control those things over which you have the most control effectively. And, and that's really what a lot of these last couple of slides are about. When we go to the bond market to sell the revenue bonds, among other documents that have to be developed, there's something called a feasibility study. An outside engineering and consulting firm comes in, it's a very specialized field in municipal finance, and they work closely with staff and ourselves to put together a historical review of your financial performance and a projection of your financial performance, usually like a five-year projection period. And the rating agencies who rate the bonds, as well as investors, rely heavily on that feasibility study to have a sense of where High Point's water and sewer system is headed. Has it got a lot of capital to do? How much debt is going? You know, what kind of coverage and cash are they maintaining? What is their rate plan? Is it affordable? Is it prohibitive? And in the last rating feasibility study that we did back in 2022, that green box, consistent with the more, the, the historical plan, we were demonstrating or showing about a 4% per year rate increase plan for the utility system. Again, which is something we, we adopted, you know, back in the mid-2000s. And so at this point, that's kind of the expectation that the, that the market has for the, the city's utility system. A snapshot of the feasibility study is on page 18. You know, you can see there's historicals, right? 2018 through 2022. You can see your debt coverage, a couple, we measured a couple of ways, but look at line 16. That's that 120 debt coverage that you have to achieve. You can see over the last five years, you've been above two times coverage. So for every dollar of debt you had to pay, you had $2 available to pay it. Very, very strong coverage. Our projection period, still solid, but we were presenting that we were going into a pretty, another active period of issuing debt and capital investment, and that we would, might see, although we were conservative in our planning, might see some erosion of the coverage, down to 1.8x or 1.7x. And that was, that was accepted, right? It didn't change the rating, it was part of the discussion. But built into that on line one was the projected 4% per year rate increases. So we had, we had some natural growth in the city from population growth and customer growth, but we also had a component of rate growth. And so I think that's important. One of the messages we wanted to get across is you all are moving into the 2024 budget in more detail, and, and similar to what you did in '23 with the 4%. Homestretch, page 19 just shows you over the years, historically and projected from that same feasibility study, what your coverage has been in the prior years and what it was projected to be. I just showed you that on the table. Still very strong, but we were showing a little bit of erosion in coverage, but still very strong. And then the comparison on the right, High Point's in the green bar, the national and North Carolina utility medians are in blue. You are, you are lower than the medians, you're not an outlier on the low end, but you're also not an outlier on the high end, right? And I mean, you can see there are AAA utilities that have, you know, coverage at two-plus times, and, and some AA's that are, you know, three to four times. So you're in good shape, but there's not a lot of room for that to, to fall much lower than what we projected, and still be viewed as a AA, AAA utility. Now, keep in mind, that's just 40% of the rating. There are other things that play into the rating, but it's an important 40% and one that y'all have a little bit more control over than some of the others. So no alarm bells, no flags, no issues, but something to keep our eye on. And then lastly, cash, kind of a similar takeaway. You're in a good shape by cash, you are better than your policy. That policy says you want to keep at least 50% of your budget in utility reserves. You've been operating higher than that, which is good. You've also spent a lot of cash on capital, which is good. And on a comparison basis, no, again, no concerns from our part, but when you look at where you fall in line with those other rated systems, you're, you're not an outlier to the low or to the high. So again, it's, it's a, I think, a, a metric that we want to try to, to the extent we can, maintain at that level, if not strengthen. Talk a little bit about rates and charges. North Carolina does a great job. Yeah. Okay. Last slide, page 21, they do a great job of compiling information on rates and charges. I don't know how many systems responded, 370-some systems across the state responded, 5,000-gallon basis. The median across the state, so half of them are higher, half are lower, is $85.81, and I think you all are sitting right at the, or the median is $85.82. You're at 85.81. So you're essentially the median. Half of the systems that responded are higher on this basis, and half are lower. Any questions on that? I know that was fast, but I know you've got limited time.
So, so Moody's is Equifax or Experian?
Pardon?
Moody's is Equifax or Experian. Well, I'm looking at our, our rating here, and Moody's seems to be a little tougher.
Of the three, they, they tend to be one of the last to get to that final rating.
Yeah. So in, in terms of our, our rating, in, in getting to that, we need to be more aggressive or less aggressive, or?
Well, I think it's, it's, you look at that scorecard, right? Where the 30% for the economy, 40% for finances, you got to pick your spots, and, and...
Because issuing, like, issuing debt to, to, to get growth, how, at, at some point, has that become a negative, or?
No, not, I mean, if it's, you know, if it's not terribly speculative, I think there's a, maybe a concern when you're just, you know, running lines for the sake of running lines. But no, they, they want to see growth, they want to see manageable growth, and they, they want to see that the elected body is willing to make the adjustments in the revenues to sustain the financial strength. So I mean, that's one of the most important things I think you can do on the utility side. You know, you've got a good CIP process, your department heads are, are telling you what needs to be done for, for, you know, compliance-related items to, to just serve your current customers and for growth.
Yeah, right.
And, and following that and raising the rates in a commensurate way to maintain or strengthen coverage and cash will go a long way for, for Moody's and the others. Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you all very much. Bye-bye, Bob.
Councilman Holmes, I just wanted to let you know, we will be, when we present the budget, we'll have a impact on average water sewer bill. I think that's kind of maybe what you were getting at with your question earlier. And then I think if you look in the CIP that we present, you'll see how much is rehab, how much might be expanding capacity and, and that sort of thing. Got to give you an idea of what you're funding.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
I'll say, Mayor, Attorney Members of Councils, one of the reasons we want to make sure that we had Davenport come and share this information is that as we're looking at our projects coming online, this is the information that we're using to inform the preparation of the budget, and we're looking at the, the rates that, that staff will propose to counsel.
Very good. We will be going into a closed session for economic development and attorney-client privilege, so.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And when the room...
And when the room...
People not even question about who was going to...
This is what they do, man. They do it well.
No, that was closed.
Alright, so we are... I need a motion to come out of a closed... sorry, special meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to come out of the special meeting. Adjourn the special meeting. All in favor?
Aight.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. That's a lot of words. We will start in five minutes.